I've worked on seeing everybody. Have people sign, you know who they are for minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
If you can't see it. In fact, you're gonna have to go up down and see who's on there.
I'm not getting many to our minutes from, it's hard to believe, June twenty fourth is our last meeting. And if so, any edits change those four months. And if not, that motion to approve.
Motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of June twenty fourth to twenty twenty five.
In terms of this far away, I don't think anyone will know.
This is being recorded?
Yes.
Does he hit the agenda on the community calendar? It's no zoom language. So.
Yeah, we're working with a new technology.
I have the agenda. Okay.
It ends up on the town website.
I have it. Thank you. Usually Zoom link's not there in the, in the.
That's a problem. Yeah, I've heard that more than once. And it should be. It should be in the agenda. Or at the bottom, just somewhere.
It didn't work.
It's not about calendar, but if it's not.
What's on the calendar?
I just looked at it.
Yeah, no, we need to get that fixed.
So separate school meeting section, but it's not a meeting. I would also make a recommendation, but there's a link of school. As well. A lot of people. Okay, so has anyone received any correspondence or community?
So one thing that I've heard just recently is a pre-k that people haven't received any emails or notifications or where their kids are gonna be. So people are just questioning what class the kids are gonna be in, who their teacher's gonna be, things like that.
Very well. Can I share? Of course. So our preschool registration has kind of spilled over into the last whole week. So all the information has been uploaded in the school break and that just completed this week. So the information should be coming either, it could have come today or it could be coming tomorrow from the two preschool teachers to give the information. We didn't have all of like emails, all the information. Also looking at the programming for preschool, we've done a lot of researching to like how the rooms should be for the students. So we're going to do the two classrooms are gonna be entering into the grade, I mean entering, entering into the three-year-old room. And then there'll be an entry into the fourth room. So kids who enter in the fall, whatever their age for that time, that's approved that they'll be with. And the thought process around that is for the adult needs for those class students. And in addition to that, thinking about the special population that we have and being compliant to that. So if there are less than five students who are identified as special education, we can have up to twelve students group together. And if there are more than five or more, it has to be fifteen. So I think in the past, I'm not so sure that was followed to a critique. So we had to do a little bit of backtracking, which took some research for us to kind of make sure we were compliant. So we had to employ a breeze on the staff of people just grabbing in our mailbox to their, they were like all over the place. I was like, ah, hold on, we need to get it all organized. So once we hit twenty, we've actually started a waitlist for students. So the teachers were so excited about that, not celebrating for some families, but it would be really good to be. There are a lot of people who are fast to the national school. To be in the program. And then we had someone drop out, so that waitress person got moved into the class. So right now there's zero waitlist, so we didn't have one. The teacher letters are, they're supposed to.
So this year we're doing, sorry. So this year the school's doing like a three-year-old class and a four-year-old class instead of the mix the way that they used to do it.
Yes, there'll be times when we'll still play together and do things together, but academically, with the media with the map, it makes a lot more sense to be able to give instructions to the students. So they're the older kids who are.
That's nice. That's how the original preschool ran was by age group and some kids they was swinging on it's balls to see that it's bad.
I'm sure. Do you know what total? Yeah, total enrollment overall for students, I don't have the number, but each class each day has, has twenty, except our Tuesday, Thursday classes are a little bit lighter. There's many people who chose five days a week. So we, for the four-year-olds, almost majority, I think there's like three students that are just two days a week, three days a week. But the rest of them are five days a week and then there's a quick handful of three-year-olds that aren't five days as well. Lunch bunch is full on Fridays. That's all. And there are a few others who are preparing, being full of the other sections as well. So it's really amazing you'll see that those numbers are climbing so much. Good things happened in that preschool last year. I see a lot of very dumb athletes walking around.
Yeah.
Which is wonderful. And Sherry April did a lot of outreach to them too, helping them know about the program and writing.
Yeah, I wanted to first welcome the leadership and I know I've been here, I'm here already, but I just talked to people a long time. We know they're hopeful that we, that this school, I want to keep it, keep it, keep it good. But just want to say that, just for myself. The other thing is the transportation. My daughter goes to, went to Swanskup as a school last year in National High School. So the buses, the mine, like they were just, there were two buses and they'd go at the same time. And at the middle school, they got there around like seven forty in the morning and they couldn't get in the building until five or eight. So even under a lot of weather, so I would just ask that, you know, consider the transportation in terms of travel time at school. And I mean, buses were good otherwise. Nobody got left behind, but they were generally on time in the morning. And I know that the, it's a big budget for the transportation, so I would think maybe if that, that schedule could reflect more of a staggered two buses. Right, right. I literally went to the high school and then maybe fifteen minutes to build the school, you know, which I think corresponds to the start times. Swanskup Middle School, Swanskup High School. And then the other thing is like it's a late bus. So the kids that participated after school activities at middle school and high school. The bus stops like forty-five minutes after the school day, so there's really no opportunity to use it for the kids. So if they're in the practice or it's a better flood after school, you know, it should be a little later maybe so that it can accommodate. You know, more after school activities. And I noticed that there's a, you know, thanks for looking at the mini band out there, maybe, you know, maybe, maybe that could. So it's could participate athletics, clubs and, you know, take the bus back home. So.
I actually have a schedule myself. It's confusing sometimes. In terms of, I had heard a lot of things last year, the year prior with the bus. So yeah, I'm.
Yeah, two buses like at the same time, but the schools have staggered, so Swanskup, so.
High schools at the.
Just curious, do Swanskup middle school kids get there before they're able to get to the building? Have the same issue as well as ours, or is it, ours are like there fifteen minutes before the first Swanskup kid show?
Well, I own our observations that, that the high kids get there first and they have to stand outside. They usually get there around seven forty and it doesn't, not a lot of time.
One reason I'm asking, we're actually meeting tomorrow with the new superintendent who was the new principal, so we have a captive audience too.
Yes.
That's our, our interest in further cooperation then, so.
In the, in the school day, middle school starts at eight twenty. So the whole ones start ten after eight, they get there and they go to cafeteria and breakfast and stuff. So we're not outside, but they're like twenty, it's on time.
No, that would be great. Yeah.
At least you can. Okay. Yes, that bus would be available for certain time, maybe not on a daily basis, but that's a bus that's driven by a regular license too.
Yeah, it offers a lot of opportunities for enrichment and activities, so whatever you guys can do. And also to save money on the budget.
Okay, moving on to the examination and operation.
Break the Walmart there for one hundred and twelve thousand forty-seven cents. This is purely standard to the open school or specialty tuition. Those sorts of maintenance items, there's one that you might be curious about, it's called the throne.
I have a feeling what that is.
Light and supportive bodies that are on campus for the construction project and so. That will be a. Build a wheel. That's the only one that I saw that's about that, or is some questions.
Motion to approve the bill roll presented at August nineteenth, twenty twenty five school meeting meeting, the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars twenty six cents.
Second. So moving on to the superintendent's report.
The general categories, I like, yeah. The hires. I look through those. As a shift around, right? Set really good through the position. The greenhouse, almost ready. Wiring date done today, hydro seting next week and that will be put together. You know, I was really proud of two outgoing sixth graders, Zavi Brady Lane, who. Collected a hundred fifty sea shells, sure. And then died in purple, purple hearts. Part of the five years. Talk about teaching kids, so really, really bad. Sixty. I go to the guys, I was saying, if you move the pathway, that's what I'm thinking, die tomorrow. I think they want to go off. That is. It was already meant with them that their connectivity should probably come through that and which reports are still pretty vulnerable. I'm really excited about this year.
So very eager to hear. All of us for not getting it too forward today, but. So my communications plan or my entrance plan, if you look at the first two messages, I kind of stuck to these three things as my main goals for my entrance. And, oh, I forgot, sorry, this week. So I want to make sure that I'm listening to learn about what is important to the whole network, whether it's staff members, students, family members. Community members, making sure that we are, I'm hearing what's needed and what value the communities and. And then building relationships and I think that huge portion of my last classes I started, so right now. And then assessing and aligning priorities, so taking the school with their plan and then really coaching the staff and families to be able to align all of it. So we're not taking too much and biting too much off, but keeping it manageable and that is along with the school, I mean the vast school. So if you look at this, it's the communication that I sent out initially to families tied in to that. So I sent an email out to families with the same information. And then for staff, I did the same and I also gave staff a survey. So they have a very extensive survey, probably half an hour or so that they'll allow. That really gave me a lot of information about their value, their comfort level, the different portions of school improvement plans. So like how do you feel about feeding your book, how you feel about school rules, how you feel about school culture, how you feel about read the math, all of the things. And having them rate their comfort level and how they feel like they're prepared to move forward. And from that survey, I've been able to gather lots of things that'll help me to make some decisions as we roll out. If you look down to the, for goals, you'll see the summer staff survey, I had twenty-three respondents on staff, which is great turnout. I went through, I analyzed all of the trends and it really focused specifically on school culture and behavior expectations. Those were the most needed and stood out, but then these are areas that we should be really focusing on with the staff. And lo and behold, that's what ties into our school improvement plan, which probably how that all came about in this first class year. So I'll, I'll, I mean, to see it's lining up nicely for that. And in knowing that, it's like, how do you then kind of take those, all that information and plan out for the year? So then I took those pieces and were like, okay, what will professional development look like? Stand out with professional learning across teachers, when jumping from one tablet to another, we'll be focusing on our main goals. And we need to support teachers and get feedback along the way that will help us to be developing the speed on how to stay and on. Professional development team. So all the line ideas of the support team, in addition to any other supports from the group. So that, that was one piece of it that I took away from the survey. And if you want to next and last word, I got a lot more information, but it's from leading the individual small group staff conversations. I can't believe I only get here for a short time, but I feel like I could forever because I feel part of this group already, kind of people just walking in the block. And my mom, that's how I'm gonna handle that, because I feel very comfortable to do that and problem solve before we would watch the preschool. Like allow that, okay, stop, back up, let's sit down and all together, something to help to just begin, sat down, walk, walk through all the process. Trying to get clear process of. Protocol, that there wasn't a lot of mistakes in the process, how we can try. I think that will happen a lot this year where we're a lot of us and really got to like streamline a lot of things. But everyone's surprised, you know, we're settled to do that work. My leadership approach is to do it with others and not on the phone. So getting the feedback along the way of anywhere, any tasks, we just begin with, have a voice. So in my meetings so far, I've met with classroom teachers, school nurses, special education director, special office staff, briefing teams. The school adjustment counselor, technology department, ministry's assistant, maintenance team, lunch director. So these are all people that we do pretty much regularly in addition to. And then I have the principal, I was able to connect with the summer rec department and they were having this big thing, so I was like, let's combine efforts here. And they had water slide. And it was so fun, the kids have such great time, you know, everywhere, the kids were coming out and through sixth grade, we're all so. And you can first book. Like, what are your names? I don't do stuff like that, you know, I'm like, well. So it's like getting to know and then the little ones coming out. It was, it was great. They were trying to get me on the water slide, but. Maybe another time. So that was really successful and I invited champions that are after school programs instead of a space to open new things too, which try to generate some more interest in the program, school program. And that's been great. Therefore we sat. And today I was able to help them to secure substitutes and point them out. So to be like, building, acting. I remember, I believe there are up to five students that are three-year-olds, but I, I anticipate that's probably the start of earning, getting close to school and using. School sites and the book start time and operations. Yeah, I'm still shocked that it's not low. Yeah, I. I put it on, on the chart square. Say we did generate, we had one, but while this one student, and then it grew to two, then it was three and then it was five. So it's slowly, I think, I think it's gonna take time for people to grow trust to know. It's a great partnership that I have with them already. They'll very connected to this program.
You didn't have any more like events, parent events, all the.
They're gonna be able to.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And maybe try sending out enough messages.
Yeah.
I mean, during the summer, things I think, finding it lost.
I have a schedule somewhat, I'll give you that, so we get to school, so then we'll compare that just before to. And then one other piece to champions that you should be aware of is that if students are in preschool and they turn five, the five-year-olds are able to go. So if they're in lunch bunch, they've, you know, they've done the preschool program into lunch bunch, families that have five-year-olds, they have additional time, they can button up. Champions is like a plus. You're signing on, they could sign up with you in advance. Go where you can have to go. So fully register, no councils, start phase. You have to schedule, help you take them. Makes it more flexible.
Yeah.
Do not tie it into that.
It's not like I'm doing every Tuesday for the next month, even if I need it or I don't.
That's available, however, if you say, I only need it twice a month, so if you're five. Have different schedules to the times, then you should be able to. How long to say how school program happens the worst time, five big days. I'm shocked. That especially now where most work environment is. Yeah, I know. The more we advertise and the more we talk about it.
I mean, it also might just be a factor about things. At last year, people weren't as. They said something up that they know, they don't care it's there, but that's, I think the message is that this is gonna be. So I think that's a message something you can, you know, cross town. Yeah. Maybe we can even, work around that.
And Amanda, the director, she's from, so she has a lot of suggestions. She said, she said spread of word to be, trying to give the word, she's willing to do anything that will. It will help.
Yeah.
Email first page. Like I was, I'm going to try and get some to the back to the parents.
Market basket does with the balloons.
So then the next thing I hear is my community partner sessions. And what I did when I first started, I brought some welcome baskets to the fire department and to the police department. And then I met with teacher chiefs and was talking about. And then I met with teacher chiefs and was talking about, tell me about the safety of Johnson. What does it look like? You know, make sure the children. And so I do have them coming on the half day to do a safety talk with staff. So they'll do a skill for our department, a skill for the police department. And they're gonna partner with us to just assure who to go over to. My goal is to have them in the same room at the same time, so we're all within the state and, and then we. Teachers and both of the departments. And then I've met librarian Rob invited me to drop by me at the town hall. The last meeting. Where I met all of the players at the table, where I'd already met many of them, some of the purple hats. And town hall staff, so just being building. And I'll view at the first. Oh, and then I had communications with the Swanson principals at the middle and elementary school. We've been doing some cooperation work together as well as. I've done some communications with superintendent tomorrow, Rob and I. Made some connections. That's fantastic. Want to make it so it's a smooth transition from. Here. Yeah, it's a huge jump. And then of course, working with their HR. To show that they're getting hiring and using this system is a great occasion. First ninety days, sixty days. Sixty days. It's so predictable. So the next, next piece that I'm working on, since I've analyzed and called like a lot of data from the surveys. And then looking for students for prioritizing from the staff surveys. And like I said, the main things that popped out are the finding ways and opportunities to strengthen the school culture. And aligning us with PVISS and their systems. That will create some consistency for students so that they're experiencing their. That there's clarity across all the different classes at the school. So looking really explicit about like, this is what hallway we get to. This is play lesson plan. This is how we lock them home and this is how we go to lunch. This is how we go down the slide and the quick crap. So having them be individual lessons, so that students are more built, know what the expectations are. Staff is excited about this, but places like sometimes kids aren't taking side down of the front. You guys are not in my grade and I'm not. That's okay. They're great. You know, right? So they're, they're excited to have some more. Um, guidelines for kids. And I think it will help us to less be the problems and the partner and consistency of building a strong culture for the school. So the big real sense of safety, well, expectation. So doing something that they never. You taught you. And then. On the first opening day, I'm gonna do, I'm sharing a lot of my time, and I'm trying to be selfish with it. But it's, it's amazing superintendent wants time. Such led department wants time. Nurse wants time, I go sit in my time, Rebecca Maff wants time, so it's shrinking. But my goal is to really go over some of the findings so that. Those that would go in and start to roll off that PBA lesson. Last minute, hard starting some conversation. And it's all on that, but that's. That. And then also thinking about families and how we're communicating with families. And one of the things that I'd like to do this year is. Instead of having a ten-page newsletter, I mean, I'd like to send things out to parents square in a tiny fashion. We're paying for the square. And we think about how today's society is, everyone's about social media. Our parents are like a social media. So when we got something yesterday for soccer, we'll share, he said, well, where do I put that one? What documents do we got on my, everything will go there. Some people are able to throw that out quickly and immediately. So that thing was getting into the champions, bite-sized pieces that people can digest. So having a portfolio, maybe it was hoped of a newsletter. So we're just gonna make sure we have some guidelines, like teachers above what that looks like. They have it in their back to school letters to families to say our communication, so we find the background square. I know when I was a mom, I was also, did I get that in an email or was that in a document? Like, where was that? So if we have it all screwed up in one place, it's a lack of, where is that? I agree. And it's the main tool that Swam Spot uses as well. And so for us, you know, parents that have kids at the Swam Spot school, we're completely used to like parents are getting, you know, very timely information. And it, and it helps so much that I think it's like, can you wait till last minute? If you're waiting, I know if you get it on Friday as a parent, I doubt you, you had your kids all weekend. Like, are you sitting down to read the ten pages newsletter? You're gonna want something to do. You can send your preferences to me and to.
And I know, I got the thing about soccer and I looked at it and I was like, well, I can address this one thing right now. Be done with it and it's automatically, so it's much better.
I think, I think it will be. We can reassess to see if it works that way, but I know it will be beneficial to the families. So continuing that one thing that I had my technology specialist that I'm meeting up today. Cause I think we've cast some families have opted out of notifications. So we sent some saying, hey, all our information's gonna come this way. So they wanna off back in because we can't do it on our own. Or in fact, where they want, you know, break weekend, so they have. Hopefully can go back now. This is how, I think we said, I would, we get, we say directions on top of it.
You did.
You did. So we want to make sure everybody gets that. So just in three seconds, in a more time. Real, real time. And again, like going back to this whole improvement plan, aligning our findings. Professional learning, all the different things, so school council too. Right, that I have a bit, school council will tie right to, so that will be more of a, well, PVISS focus with our school council. Still looking for a couple of members for that, one community member. If we have two, we'll need another one. So we can get somebody else to join, I love another teacher, I'll show up. And it'll be, and I have a large law for that too. I'm speaking, some of the present teachers, they're at your school. And I think that's about, we will.
That might be something to put out.
Yes, I did. I said out, we said. Okay. And then for outreach, these are just. These are different. Square. Remember, this is quite more than just a wow. Also, that will be sort of. Parent connection, making sure we get, we're transparent with the things we're doing and using friendly language that aligns with PVISS. So if you notice any of your medical forms, I don't know. Got any requests for medical forms from others over the summer for anything you have on a meeting. Always be careful.
I did.
You did. And notice the language that you got was a little bit really like, you're so happy you're gonna be here. Like, it was a very warm and fuzzy. We spent a lot of time going over, like, what are the expectations? What's mandated? How can we so get the kind of gentle way we go first? What kind, sorry, we want them to feel welcome, we want them to be stable and involved. You know, they've been part of PTO, we want all those things, so that's really good brand welcome. For the first thing that happened. And it's serious, right? So joining it, very friendly, so it's me as we're gone. Bless you. Yeah, so we're, that's just one example of. Of like what we're gonna do, it's just really getting comfortable. So with our, our messages. Yeah, so there's some other things that like I said, like to continue to. Connecting and building. Give you a little more of an update, November the second, we want to stop with that. And then the overall process, I'm trying to align percentage of my staff surveys I get. And align that to ensure we're getting everybody's feedback, give people more opportunity for input a lot. But it's not like the one of that.
So are you doing an initial survey to staff?
I did.
Okay, and then what do you mean by convo? You're gonna survey them again?
The survey is, what do you think? It's like, it's like thirty. Yeah, it's like a whole ledger.
Yeah.
The win, what I've done is kind of in and out, there's other trends.
Yeah.
And then those trends line up for the school, for the player.
Yeah.
And then when I do the survey, I walk away from the work we do. Those fields on.
Same survey or like quick dip step?
Just taking specifically from work.
Are we actually doing what we wanted to do? Right?
Like that, exactly. It's like checking in.
Yeah.
Where are we at? What do you mean?
Appreciate it.
And then that's the other piece too. It's like we do the thematic in one of the goals is making sure we're building some house or walkthroughs. I want to get a team of teachers together to do that, so that the books are awesome. We're also. And then some examples I have here of my ways of building some of the culture. One thing that I did was I designed some staff jackets. And so I've been selling staff jackets to faculty and we sold plenty of them already to them. So they're, they're like a black jacket and they have Mary's blaster on them. Which is always to be created and then it says Johnson School, Education. So I put, it's an educator, not education, because that's.
It's really.
Yeah, it's really cool. And your name goes like right here on the.
I'll buy it, yeah.
Mr. Levo online.
So I'm, I'm excited, the staff is really good. Like, let's do a picture all together with our jackets on. Like, it just, it just shows you like how you build that completely. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So that's one, one of the things I've worked on and then. Oh, the facility, so this is, this is really great. So this, this kind of sparked before I got here. They had asked Mr. Levo, the teachers asked him if he could have, they could have their own staff room for lunch or something different than what they had previously. And then when I came, they were like, is it okay? What do you think? It's full rain over here. So we, now I think we can even call it a staff room, but I think we have to call it an apartment suite or something like that. It is beautiful. I had the room painted for them in lovely Brittany blue. They have PTO donated some money, so they have a new leather couch. And they have some rugs and they have a air fryer and they have an ice maker and they have all these things. And what, what they did is that has further built community, they created a wish list. So within the staff, they're donating things that they bought themselves into the room. So it's everyone's feeling some sense of belonging to the room, so it wasn't just like one person's idea. They created like a, a vision board of all the things that they want for it. And on your way out, you have to take a look.
Is it the, it's the old lunchroom?
Yes, next to that one, right? So there's a work room now, which was the. And right next, that used to be like an extra room for like a new room space.
Okay, true. That's wonderful.
Yeah, it's really cute in there. I just can't, I'm not gonna tell. I ate my own tonight. I was like, like I had my steak chips, I cooked them in the oven, but I'm like, I get to eat. It's great. But they're very excited about it. Then they have a whole board set up for them to put pictures from their summer. So it's a vision board, like remember Happy, like we did over the summer. Looked very scary the whole day. Yeah, Kayla, I have it too. I want to shout it out for really taking a spearheaded leadership in that and helping to do a part of the preparations and organization for that. Something, something quite amazing, a project that has really brought them to work. That's another piece that summer. Staff updates. Oh, I created a staff update document that I upload all of my information. So like carrot square, that's where all the family information goes. For us internally, we have one to Google on, that I just add to every time I have a staff update. So it's not like completely, but it's been kind of weekly because of the summer has been. But if anything comes up and it's important, open it up, shoot them an email and say, staff updates. And then they'll just go in, see them in the document, they're checking things out. The documents organized for staff to be able to stay, following up with their contract. It has all the job postings linked within it and then anything that's been filled. And then the status of each one of those hires. So that there's always somebody knowing when, is it in the interview process? Is someone hired or are they in the process of being hired? That way it kind of saves time and saves speed. And like importantly, so long here as well, the JBS web hub is in there, that's just like a lot of the documents. Staff jacket looking so in there, so that you're just, everything's in one place. And I'm slowly dropping like pro tips for technology in there for them. So it's like, if you hit Ctrl F, you can find anything in the document by just typing one word. And they do it, oh, I never knew that. So they're looking for any information about Doreca square, they just want to read that. And then if we go through and find all the spots of the document, that's really. That way they never miss anything or if they weren't paying attention and they know that there was something, something like. So trying to streamline it and make it so that it isn't. Now below, this is what it looks like in the, in the documents that I have with, so that positions that are open. Let's see, it's an interview stage for the OT, Director of Special Education, lead applicants. ESP is the stage, daily subs.
The OT being in interview stage, that was like.
Late, late class.
That was like a huge issue.
Yeah. We, I've seen, she resigned and now we're firing. Oh, we have. We're trying to hold. They would, she would get plastic.
Cause that will be.
It's not will, we.
A firecracker. Once we are started. And so was last year.
The, if by any chance, when Mary and I and Rob have been talking and if by chance, if it falls real, we're gonna use. Yeah, so we'll have. Go now, but I thought to grab this.
We, we, we need somebody here on day one.
Yeah, it was.
I know, I know, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm like.
Yeah, I mean, what, what is the issue?
Uh, we're gonna, we just, we just.
Yeah, okay. And the other, you had someone that resigned.
What happens is people get a full-time job.
So it's the part-time and what is this?
I was kidding.
What? No, what, uh, level position? Like, what is it a half or is it a?
Oh, oh, it's a point, uh, eighteen hours.
Eighteen hours. What is that?
One of the things that makes it point one, maybe a little more of a roadblock that's like taking. But down, it says up to.
Yeah.
So for someone, so.
Yeah.
Work together. If you go to the person, say, well, we have six hours.
Yeah.
Six, twelve, sometimes it's eighteen, a lot of people can call. I think it's the kind of situation for two of those part-time. Say it's eighteen hours and possibly more depending on if there's case load or whatever we budgeted three. Or let's see the amount. That way someone knows what they're gonna get. And there's always something to David, uh, special ed, that David could do as a, uh, job, which has a fillers, a week or a six, fill in whatever it might be with eight. And, uh.
I guess that's what I'm asking. What is the roadblock? And if it's, that it says up to.
Well, the roadblock is if all those part-time positions are there, part-time. And they're designed that they're below the, and below what when, uh, benefits get in, in terms of insurance.
Yeah.
Twenty hours, who doesn't get help insurance?
Yeah, I get it.
If you're a young OT, um, you're not gonna bite that particular situation. If you're someone who's maybe showing two or three different things, you gotta know that that pocket's gonna be able to yield. So I, I think what this is gonna have to say is it's eighteen hours.
Is there any way that we could, um, do what we do at Swampscott with other positions?
I was just gonna say.
On the OT and like, okay, we need point four, you need point six, let's get a full-time position and.
Yeah, we're, we're doing a lot of that. We're doing, like, an ELL teacher.
Yeah.
Uh, we had experimented and talked a little bit about possibly doing that with Special Services Director. Who's staying with us until we find somebody.
Yep.
And she'd stay all year.
It's very.
Uh, she might have to be more remote, but that's our next item. So.
Yeah.
You know, we'll get into that. Uh, she's got a situation with family almost that she really all in common. And she also is committed to the school and the kids as an experienced Special Services Director. And we have not had applicants that have, you know, ran out for one and a half day, Special Services Director. We take all those, I mean, new, is that, they're all looking at new slices. And, uh, schedules don't coordinate the travel distance. Very difficult to. But work the EL, because the person was a EL teacher, part-time at Swampscott already in the mornings. And they just get the guy from over here and we tweak our schedule so that the EL was delivered to just a couple of kids in the afternoon. But that's harder to do with, it's harder to, to, uh.
Is there a possibility of a work though with, um, with, I was thinking of, uh, Special Services in Swampscott? Would that person ever take us?
They did not. Despite that.
Okay.
The part that they did sort of agree with is that Mary had been side-savvy at middle school, preschool, special ed meetings at Swampscott. Yeah, but really Swampscott's in charge. And the only ones that she really has to go to, what really should go to. Uh, you know, have you gone beyond your interest in the child is ones that might involve placement. You know, financial situations that would build back upon, you wanna be at the table for that discussion based on, you know, where is this child going? Have you looked at this option or that option? But I think she'll lean that part off and only go to the really high level, uh, Swampscott, High School, Middle School. So she'll be center deep. And that will give her a little more time, a little more freedom. And I think that it work. Depends on the medical situation, some work long-term.
Yeah. A big problem.
That's typical in a good school, thirty kids and you're trying to book all the job responsibilities, it's fine in the classroom. You book the classroom, give the specialties. That's very difficult.
Well, since we're kids, Karen's not here in the final. Yeah, I think it's a lot of, it's good. It is a baby, it is a simple. We're hoping that the intervention, which is. That's what I'm about. Um, that will hopefully produce some of those summers. So what might present, if the learning disability, they have that gap in this question for a student. Um, so I'm hoping most of us will be on, pretty well. Hopefully, as that's important to my mind, it's solid. But how do we really look at what services are? What is that this ability, how can you, how can you?
We, uh, two, the, uh, work really great. And there are, there's some contract and then a full-time opportunity came up late some. And they've gotta take that. So then it's reload again. And even if they had stayed on to. If in another year, they're looking for. There, there's no illusion to that unless it's a unique, you're, I need their point two here. That's a, that's a rare combination to put together.
It is. And I know we have the relationship with Swampscott. But what about them? Have, have we ever?
Building, we don't have the same connection.
No, we don't, but.
That doesn't mean we shouldn't.
Option. Yeah, I'm just curious, guys. We're always gonna be.
Many of their part-time people would be looking for that extra little piece and you'll see that in universal posting system. Uh, as opposed to, you know, for a moment, people can sue. And then, then maybe you can bring up somebody for this amount of time, but it's a possibility to be able to, you know.
So our, our OT candidate is, I mean, so she, in her mom is of childcare. But this is like an, you know, tradition for our, those are like working, we just. We're gonna give. Oh, yeah. In the vision.
The only reason I'm pushing it is because it, it was a big loss at the end of last year. It did a lot of families really hard. And I'm sure that it's gonna be a spotlight at the beginning of the year. So.
Um, if we look at the hires that we do have, um, since I'm in school. Our technology, we lost Peter, um, on, and he, um, is retiring from technology. He has started a whole branch of real estate business that he has taken off last. So a young man retired his technology hat. Uh, but he and I did the interview. And we found another amazing that, uh, who has started and has done a fantastic job just last, very so well, please. Pauline, uh, is in that bag. And he was highlighted in my staff spotlight today, um, on Karen Swear. Give you a little background. And he is, uh, got a bachelor's degree in technology and he's part-time. Was looking for the full-time. So I, yeah, we could, that that would happen to him. But I'm trying to get him to invest in every day and something to be really loved with so much. He's had a great time sharing some love and things. So hopefully, he can. He is, he is really great, um, and very knowledgeable. I have admitted education and technology, so has a little bit of a looking curve. But he's catching up really. So great.
Can I come to the party? Perfect. Tech. Which was. I'm all. I'm just trying to think of.
Yeah.
Where.
Yeah, that's actually, uh, wait. To make about that. I can, I'm not worried. Sharing. It's how. Open for us to. Between, it's fire, it's all school. I would think you could easily have. Um. The next, um, candidate that we hired from Gikik is definitely up. And we, uh, fired her from San Francisco Public School. This is her seventh year teaching phys ed. She, um, is shared with Swampscott. So we work together in collaboration to help her come. She will be teaching music on Thursdays and on Friday she'll be doing music lessons as well as vocal. I'd ask her if we could start a little something for the kids to be able to sing in addition to instruments. Maybe either be creative to have the band play some music and kids singing along with it and a little mini band that's. So, um, she's so open, so excited. She's, she does have a vocal background as well. So, um, she's already, she just started, we hired her, um, last week. She's already started with a connection with instrument company. Um, so she's excited and we've also received a, um, an offer for some money that would be donated to our school from the, um, Ed Foundation, where they are willing to have a fundraiser and the proceeds. We're going to, in collaboration with the new teacher. Foundation. That's exciting. Um, Nancy Cassidy was hired in May for pre-k. She's one year. Um, second grade Melissa Austin, who was long-term self last year. ESP, uh, those are our paraprofessionals, so putting their contract. Uh, so we have hired Olivia Claire. She's from Vermont where she moved. That's one of the winners, a professional there in the, which is awesome. So she. Still, yeah, she's button, but we're working pretty cool. Uh, and then Cassie Jones was a former substitute class a few years ago. And, uh, we recruited her back and I already finished work from maternity leave for one of our ESPN. But then, so she'll be covering. If the staff, she'll be back. Of doing. For us. And then our Sarah Harrow is another shared staff. She's from Montevideo, Montana. Student that's involved that needs sort of place, the local, that actually, with Swampscott.
There's a lot of, you guys have a lot of experience. And then the roadblocks started to show up over, she's retired. So she's the only one that, this is, she worked up to twelve hundred hour, but she worked in full-time last spring. So there's X number of hours back. She's point six-three and burn over that. Because she's gone and retired. So she's just below the window where she can work. And really, we do have very strange, it's like.
Yeah, she's. Sure. Great.
We probably would have kept her up in the full month. For one year of leave of absence. Really, one-six-three helped us in that situation because it allowed her to work the table and still be able to. Do the tired, the experienced. But the rules are not helpful for us. Sense, I guess.
There's a little bit.
Not for what you're doing.
Um, okay, so moving on. Okay. Uh, so scheduling development has been, um, in some of the ideas came out of the staff survey about feeling very isolated per grade level and not having other people to collaborate with. Um, so what I built in, I wish I had more staff to do this in a more, in a better fashion than I can. Um, we're going to have built-in PLCs, which will be, um, first and second grade teacher will meet together, uh, once a week and we need the second and third and then fourth. One, two, three, four, five, six. Uh, so that they can start to do some collaboration work and looking at data and what transitions they look like from grade to grade. Um, so that might look like, how would you lesson for the Rico? And was it for like for the lessons that align around, uh, also, did you get some, like, what's it look like for you? Um, I know when I was a teacher and when I did curriculum, a lot of times teachers look at something through one lens and say like, oh, I don't really have to teach this part because I don't really understand how to teach that. I don't think kids see that, whatever. And the teacher of the next grade, oh, you better teach that because that's actually mine, but not for the next year. So I'm trying to give them that, that overlap time so they can have some of those different conversations across grade levels. Um, so that, the way I think to arrange that is that they're on Fridays because they have library. Um, I did a back-to-back with their special. So the kids will have the, uh, PE and then they'll go to the library or vice versa. And so where that overlaps, the teachers will still have their contractual prep before and after. And then in the middle, they meet at their PLC, this time Fridays, and then you have that spring. Really to do, Mary, and then the kids are still hearing your special. So we're doing that, hoping we'll see how it rolls out, how it works. Um. So it is that I had to build in other spots for breaks for kids to do because they're going. I choose, so I built in, I think, for them, which they don't understand. I was very, um, cognizant of giving time for each content. So in the past, I think they got a special schedule and then they were, oh, they could build their schedule around it. I went as far as to give content times. So you have six weekends of, you know, six minutes. Uh, so that they, it's all, it all fits in to the time. And that way we're getting, guessing a one plus four or an off time learning. And then also we should start to see some buildings and like sports, not a lot because it gives us a structure. So that's, that's this time. That's still building. Addition. They, whatever, I did your, maybe they're on. But those still be fun things to really try to structure. Um, and then I built it in intervention blocks in the day. I'm hoping that, I think, we'll spread out, we'll have the special education. Programming, so whatever services they get in addition to using the, uh, passion, there's also to do that role in addition to the preschool. As we mentioned, so I built out the blocks. Not everyone can be getting that one section of the day for Katie to get to everyone. Virgin possible. So I've assigned an ESP to work with Katie as, uh, an intervention. So Lou Wallach, who is a former, um, English teacher. You better, uh, he's one of our ESPs who is the founder, who has the, that's what, was a valuable result. Uh, and so Katie will do a lot of the, uh, with Blue and the classroom teachers. So if you picture a classroom that has, uh, let's just say twenty kids and you have special education. You're giving things and services for some eventing, you're giving some content for the name of the teacher. You know, our, our group, small group, for instruction, are like all kids, they're built in that home block. So if we can pull that and if we need it, please do get our specialized instruction during that time. We'll see how it rolls out. I'm, I'm trying. It's, it's like, it's like playing agenda. Um, Katie is not available in the morning, so she'll be tapping some of those things with you and the classroom teachers. So some of those interaction blocks will be. I'm confident. Any questions? I'm, I've done a lot now. A 60-day. I'm not even. I'm excited. Um, and then the next piece is the progress reports. I put it into time school progress before the day of the whole process. Ahead of time. And then Eureka Square is rolling out. In fact, we can see here I have, um, we've been, the curriculum team, so Gabby and Taylor, they're doing virtually. So we're spending time all of us together going through and really pulling Eureka Square to some of my curriculum background. Saying like, no, you can give us extra of that. No, show us all that is where the connections must be standard and ask a lot. So we did kind of lose one of the people that we were connected with, we just were, and they gave us someone who's a little more higher up in the system. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. So I feel like we're getting more for a while because I keep probing that one. So can you tell us more about this? Um, trying to get as much free feedback as possible on these meetings and the girls that are working a lot. Tell them to put their questions as well. So they're kind of fun. This is fun. Um, and then within Eureka Square, I discovered that there is an intervention called Math Paddle. That paddle will be the intervention block that students use. As so it ties in with our classroom. Uh, tech department just set up the online access. So here in dating, you start to bring them out, the reading, the learning, the word format. Our materials were delivered to class, the girls started. Uh, she did like, we're just seeing what's here, no, no, she didn't like. So they're, they're on top of it, being helpful in that way. Um, PD, we requested a change of time and my fingers are crossed because they have not gotten that. That opening day. They, they was booked for like eight thirty in the morning. Speak that, so we want to adjust that. So I think it's just asking a point. If not, when the seventh awkwardly doing a math training before you need to sleep. So yeah, all's in their part. Um, talked about future learning walks that we're looking to do. And then I just wanted to end with some staff shout-outs that came this summer. Um, the entire staff should be shut out. They have been so well. And when I'm like, I have no idea what you want to do, they take the time to sit down and explain it. And I've already, I feel as though I've built a lot of trust with many of them already. And then say that this is broken or I don't know how to do this. That's why it's broken. I need help. So they're, they've been supporting me in my transition and I've been trying to support them so that they're getting what they need. And staff, if you haven't noticed, the building is shining beyond shine and outstanding work. So Holmey and Shane. Then we had two younger helpers that were students and had Jackson and Louis. They were here all summer or some time because they had a little break to go to sleep. Have the place moving forward. Outstanding. I already shouted out Kayla for the work she's been doing long standing. I should shout out her. He's also removing things. Um, our new tech people, Adrian, for the work he did. Uh, Karen in the nurse's office has been so instrumental. One of the things I always worry about, uh, the safety of students and knowing that our incoming students have all of their medical needs known to us, when they walk through the door is really important. Historically, they said they would start that process when school started and be getting some of that before again. Um, I really wished Rob was gracious enough to give some little extra time to the nurses so that we could have a process for sure to get that for the same time. So we really wish we did a little bit of a follow-up with that. And that email, the next day, the phone reminder, next day, there's a phone call. And you guys sitting next to members, what have us? Hi, we really need these stuff. So we're, we're in great shape. I felt really good about that. And I got the shout-outs today to go over what some of the news are and what types of trainings that to give the support. That is kind of important. Oh, and oh, I liked most. And trusting they, they roll out and you want to do. You're giving me all the time.
Just part of the request for some percent.
I'm removing my teachers. This is fantastic. Thank you. And I think you're in great shape right now. Starting school. I'm excited to see. I, I really want to. This is wonderful. You're welcome to. Bruce's school and see all the girls and everything. Nice and tidy and ready to go. Then maybe two teachers that are still doing a few things.
I sound sort of excited by a little one. Because like, I think it was.
So moving on to personnel action items and updates.
Putting the updates and the personal action items in. And we were drafting that we could. But services. Your job. We work jobs. Hire two intensive, hire a special director. Hire your nurses.
The nurses, that I did not know.
By mistake, the law had said, hey, your new nurses, somebody had the law and said, no, 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 school nurses are hired by this.
Why not?
Otherwise than that, Massachusetts, all the teachers, all the rest of the staff are hired by this. It makes sense. Think it takes sense why you do the special services. Finance director. The more you think about it, it makes sense. But school nurses doesn't make sense. They're certified, uh, GSE personnel, but that's what the laws do.
A lot of laws that don't make sense.
Well said. I didn't say it.
And Mary will stay with us. She may have to be remote. She may downsize her. We're envisioning a lot of experience. She needs to go.
We're in the process of looking for.
Right. It's still posted. Once in a while we get an applicant.
Yeah.
And once we have looked at, um, not been of the at this time. I doubt most of them, you know, the people that a lot of them don't have the. And I think Tony had a connection with Mary through Somerville. And she was retired and he brought her over here. Uh, Amen is maybe. They have a purpose. She has to call Amen as a purpose. Be there. He's not listening to the couple of days. He'll run and talk. Specialties, not coming into a school system. Took on multiple IDTs outside of places. All the different, all the that occurs. That's what families.
We've been really creative too. Rob and I are talking about how we might, uh, we, we changed the posting. So like, we're like, let's reword it, let's reword it. And we did it with the potential of expansion. So that people feel like, oh, well, maybe this will help. So we put a site here not director certified. It could help you to get director certified and, and help them along the way. Uh, but we really, I'm dealing with some of the most special education lots. So we're willing to have someone, we're not willing to help someone never been in school before to be a director. Right. So there, that's like things that popped up like that. And then all of our meetings are scheduled on Tuesdays. Already be done. So we need someone on Tuesday special art. But someone said, you're like, you say this, you put you like, kind of to work a couple of numbers. We haven't run it back. But that to me is just like every Tuesday or whatever. We have running. But we're trying to be creative. So yeah, how we find some. If we can find somebody who's special director and an OT. Maybe we could get them to do those jobs, you know, and where is there? And then being cautious around cognitive interest for position as well. If director also be someone to position for. Especially. Speech or whatever, they gate that that's also spot to be. Um, but we're, we're open to any ideas everyone has. We just, I'm hitting on my network. It's hard to get a graphic. So can we have any old systems discussed, please?
Actually, we could. Don't.
I have one thing that.
Audit question.
We're not allowed to do that.
Yeah.
I know old business, uh, several years ago, the town upgraded the, um, children's librarian, the full-time. And, uh, part of that agreement was that they would spend some time maybe augmenting the library here at the school. So this is really old business back, uh, quite a few years, maybe three, four years. But, um, as you try to, you know, fill these positions, you know, that, that can be, uh, something that school could use. Children's librarian, whether it's up there or down here, and then that position. We could do some things around. Of course, you'd have to talk to the director of the library, the library, the chief librarian, um, work it out for this. Part of a compromise that came out of the town meeting. Um, like I said, probably four years ago. So, but I don't think it went anywhere. But the people involved are gone now. So it could potentially, um, be something more about between the school department and the library.
Thank you. New business.
In my role, I think we should hear.
Yes, thank, thank you very much.
Do a little more compact than I've done in the past in terms of the 10 to 15 roles, which was crazy. Would you try to get, you can actually get three down to 15. Um, so these are seven, uh, flagship to me. In my mind, important things to be doing. Two of them are left over from last year that, uh, really didn't even get started. So they're back on the list again. First is establish a strategic one in the development committee. We've had a strategic plan. Uh, I think it was planned out five to six years ago. And a new one was not built at the time. I'm not a believer in having a five-year plan. And then you create new five-year plan. I'm a believer that you have a three-year rolling plan that you add to every year. Things drop off and things add on because things change. And that will be, uh, developed with representatives from the school as well as the community and town government. And, uh, we focus on our school improvement plan and everything we'll, we'll tie together. And, uh, that will be one of the first things I'll work on this year. I would having to start some of the issues. Uh, second is to develop a five-year maintenance plan for the buildings and grounds. Uh, Zach Taylor's already helped us quite a lot for some of the back roadway that was like the surface of the moon from the back of school. This building, when it fits it, oh, it's great. You know, walk up that main door. It says 1954. See, your eyes were born 71 years ago. That the main part of this building was constructed. That's an old school building. Uh, you had a new section dock and you knew exactly what the timeframe on that was. It's down below here. But the boilers, windows, roofs all need to have a coordinate plan or what shape and, and how they should fit in with placement. Uh, and that's a difficult thing to do without expertise. Tony had been a building person, he was a superintendent. So that helped everybody a lot. We probably won't need to require the services of a firm that will help us plan to that. So that we're seeing where those are, what the costs are. So that will be the second goal. Uh, the third, uh, I'm really proud of the work we did last year with the curriculum and the professional development committee. Uh, that's why we have Eureka Square. You had an update with math program. Uh, the people that for lack of a better word, complained about it wasn't up to date. It wasn't, uh, cutting edge. Uh, our teachers dove into that. They worked with Swanson. They, uh, researched other schools. We have adopted the cutting edge map of school. That's Eureka Square. Uh, we can look at on, uh, the social studies providing component. And then sort of have a rolling, look at the different areas of curriculums for by year. But it's a a unique committee because it involves the teachers directly in their work. Suppose it's all coming up. Bringing it down. Like it does. They're part of that. And they ran example lesson plans last spring from the different choices that we've had for the math program. Said this doesn't do this and this doesn't do that. And, uh, in a small school, you can pull that on. So really see how that works, how the kids like it, what changes and scores occur. Sometimes we didn't approve and you had to sort of a little dip, we do have your eyes. Because you've got a chain over. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but sort of like national politicians talk about economy, seem to take a while to rebound. Uh, I don't know if we'll see that with Eureka Square. Uh, I think it's a clear enough program. The standards are clear, but I don't anticipate that happening. But it is definitely an appropriate thing to do. They'll have to get used to that. Uh, the next one is to continue to expand cooperation as well to public schools to benefit our students. I want to get over, which was one of my goals last year, and meet with the kids that had gone to school here in small groups at lunch. That was one of the things I wanted to do at 10 or 15, 15 of them sit down, buy them pizza and say, what was good, what was bad, what would you change? Who were your good teachers? Who were your bad teachers? Was it a worthwhile experience or not? And buy them lunch. I didn't do that. So that's going to happen.
Yeah, Rob, you did, you did do so much to spend our plumbers' responsibility, the work that you supported, Kayla Harrington as a during the sports, uh, which I feel like it's personally benefited from. And, um, just your relationship with Pam and now the relationship with, uh, what's his name, the baseball guy, Jason.
I'm not proud of that, but we, we didn't hear from the kids who had been here.
Yeah, go you, you're going to know this year, but don't, don't underplay.
And Brady, they're going to be in the middle school.
Yeah.
For them to be able to sit down halfway through the year and say, I was not prepared in this sport.
Yeah.
I'm five times ahead in this particular subject area.
I'm not aggressive, I mean, you still.
They can benefit Swanson and can benefit us. Uh, their voice matters. Our, our kids, I was everything going to be written on my gravestone? Be that kids get one shot at it. They really do. You know, if they don't get the best teacher and you took the best. You know, if they don't get the best teacher and you took the best end to the end, the best call for the school. Time passes them by, now they're in another grade, another grade. Then they can't get into this college, and you can't do this, and you can't do that. Every single day matters for kids, especially in school level like this. This, in this age group. If you have a bad kindergarten experience or bad first grade experience, that's going to haunt you for years. So I'm going to try to express that again opening day in the best way I can. That this is a noble profession that I'm looking rich in it. But you get rich in people. And seventy years later, you know, you're my age, you see kids who are now fourteen, fifteen, that maybe you had an impact on. But positive and negative. And that's a, a big weight that doesn't necessarily happen in other jobs. So I'm going to do that. And then the greenhouse, again, we're hoping to be able to have each class at their own race bed. The way around it right now, kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth. They'll grow products from cafeteria, they'll grow it for a farmer's market, where they learn about business practices. They'll price their produce and sell it periodically to folks from the community that will come by. And they'll also, I think the most meaningful part is to hopefully with the new mini van. Deliver produce to the Lynn Food Bank or other area food banks. Not necessarily going in where all the clients are necessarily there, but certainly to the administration. So that they can get a sense of giving back to, you know, obviously for less fortune. And that they've had a part in that. And I think that will help develop values. That are really important, about culture. So I think there's a lot of fertile ground in the greenhouse to make that happen. It's a perfect laboratory for that. So I'm excited about that. And then we're going to develop a universally agreed upon pledge of what we all believe in. It's going to go on this. Each grade will have a section. They will develop in the first few days like they do their own classroom rules. What it means to go to school here, what it means to be a lobster. Five to seven, important thing is that if this was first rate, that we agree that the school should be about. And the kids are going to have a section and put those on that. So that it goes to the entire school, which will be mounted in hallway, off the door. And we're going to ask kids, if you agree with those, once it's fully vetted, we'd like you to sign your name. Just like you're assigned for a market. You know, you put your name on there, and I did this once at high school. And we came up with what the things we believe, trust, companionship, helping others. And then we said, I really believe in that, kids, I want you to come up with your name on it. First week, it just stayed like that. And then lunchtime, and it went up, picked their name and signed. Three weeks later, there was five hundred signatures on there. And then you can refer to that and say, that's not what we believe in. At Johnson Elementary School. You just see something happen, hallway, you step up, you say, that's not what we're about. So that's part of the culture part. And so the bronze banner, the final banner, get mounted. And we'll see how that works out. But I'm confident that kids will come to the front, they'll enjoy doing that. And they will establish what this school is about. Where I'm not sure that's the, that's really our ticket. That's my last goal.
Only we have some lobsters in Washington.
Interesting signatures on that banner and that.
I think it's for important, it's to know this is their place, this is their place of business, right? Most of their weekend hours here.
So on opening day, by, so it's for teachers to put their value. And then that goes forward.
Rob, I had a couple of thoughts on this. One is, the only thing that I, I'm craving, I'm not watching some step or the lessons of grade. But I'm craving, I'm remembering last year's forecast report, particularly now, knowing that we have ways to go, right? I'm thinking about where are we we pray now? Because two years ago, when I said, oh my God, our staff being so volatile right now, probably between retirees. And not being able to keep people, there are a lot of issues, the staff survey, definitely. That was a doozy for us, two years ago. And a lot of that has been remedied then, and then definitely since your tenure here as our superintendent. And so there was that, but I would say like last year's math scores weren't exactly where we wanted them to be. Right on the end cast and in, in the LA too, right? And so I'm craving like a hard, like for the schools to organize around hard mental goals. And that doesn't necessarily have to be Rob's goals or Heather's goals, but it could be a school goal. Could be in the next three years, we want to grow here, here and here, as part of the strategic plan or the district plan or whatever, right? But I, I do think we need to double down and say, like more than do we like the Eureka Math Program? It's the Eureka Math Program and Math Catalyst we're bringing in to address the fact that we think our math scores will go up. And show more math education, both in our Gen Ed and in our student support, you know, population, I guess, for population to follow. And to make that happen, because that feels like a, we ended up for buzz about that. Studies for us, and there are a lot of educators that were here that worked on jobs. The second place that we are, from a budgetary standpoint and fuzz standpoint, is that we need a lot of kids starting fourth grade. To other schools, including charter. And what I hear here and unfortunately hear another group sometimes is to blame the charter. And it's not the charter's fault if they offer something that our parents are thinking is going to be better. Now, some of those kids come back, right? So and some of those kids go elsewhere. Yeah, let me just, I'm looking, like, we did this whole study over time where we saw how the board, so I'm not talking just last year. I know it's some of the kids that affect, great, that's great. But I think for us to really kind of sit and look and look and think about what maybe three, the last three classes, kids that we left. Why they leave at the moment, have we remedied that? Is it something we can, if you don't have the autonomy, that's one thing. But after having just gone through negotiations with the teachers, pretty reasonable bunch, you led a hell of a negotiation for us. And it feels like we could, knowing a lot about public charter autonomies myself, I don't see anything here. That I think would be hard to sort of replicate that our family is doing, maybe they have a couple of our support. So I, I think you can tackle that here, and we could make for a stronger, like this year we'll have twelve kids, I think, maybe more in the sixth grade, which is great. That's awesome, that's, so maybe you've already remedied it, yeah. Okay, great, that's great. That is great, and that, and that class was focused on third rates, the fact that they kept that power of great. And a testament, I think, to those who are great teachers, I do think, I think you gotta have our eye on that always, yeah, because that's a part of it.
You want to turn the grades left us this year and didn't leave because they wanted to leave Johnson Elementary. They relocated in their family situation to support the lives. So and we have a lot of new teachers, but don't there's not one that committed to stay here and stay with the school. And see the course, and kids are not going to be seeing all these different faces in the classroom. And hopefully be retiring before they might have otherwise done that. Happy to be here, they're respected, they're well compensated. They're the holy grail. We need to work in front of kids.
I wish we could tackle home office teachers, but that's a different thing. Last one on the strategic plan, I, for years, I've been, I don't know. I continue to feel that, that Northeastern, A, I think Northeastern does do right by us. And I wonder if there is a deepening to that partnership. And especially with all the other partnerships that you've been, including, let's not forget, the procurement of the van itself. I think, I, I just think there's more there, and we have such a commitment to be watchful here. Like I think of the cleanup that, that they do here, and think, I mean, here we are, an island. I think about all the, this greenhouse and the garden and the wellness stuff that y'all do here. And I, I think there's something with this coastal education studies program that we could tap more as a Owen White for Northeastern in the heart. Feels like this world. But it's, it's, but it just sits there, and they're still there.
A front person for Northeastern who had yearly given, not in person, but on behalf of Northeastern, twenty thousand dollars. As they see there, that faucet is not on the.
Oh, I didn't know that. It should be, it should be, and they're still here.
Places I, greenhouse, not going to help. Hey, it's a twenty thousand mile summer, could you give five, maybe ten for the greenhouse sector? No, we're not going to that this, this time, well, I don't think that was one of these sort of heated discussions.
And they're mad about all the language.
I don't think they need person. But, but still, the structure above.
And I know people have strong feelings, but in this, like, just being a realist, they're still here and we're still here. The kids are being educated, and we have a hell of a program.
I think it was a flashbulb, that sort of slowed it down and now.
Look, could the kids be helped?
Come back to what, what really matters.
Now, Hot Egg kind of picked up the ball when that got dropped. And I'm not sure they. Yeah, they were paying for, this was before all of this political stuff happened. They were paying, and they would have teachers come in from up at Northeastern and work with the trade level. And everything has kind of taken a step back because of litigation. So it's a long. I, I, it used to be a great relationship, I went to them, with them to Savannah for a conference. So it was a great relationship, but, but everything just. I think so too, but I think we need to be patient, but.
It always bothers me, like they're giving me doing so much more.
I know, I know.
It also might help them to do something.
You, you know what, I do, maybe I'll do something with, I've spent a lot of time with the science people. But I can look into it, but as far as the direct, I'm looking at it from another perspective that I have the ability. Yeah, yeah, because it definitely, it just that it's one more layer. That the kids get to really be in the environment, really experience and learn about the life that's in the rocks and beyond. And, and respectful life. So that, that's a big discussion for us to.
That's, that's, so what I've brought up in terms of like, and I am not a standardized aspect, but it is a metric. I would really would like that scores up.
I think the intervention is all.
And a new math program.
And, you know, if you look at any new adaptation, as Rob was saying, you see a different point. And I know we're optimistic that it will be a five, but it is ninety-seven percent. So because typically what happens is a new program, kids who are taking our new program in fourth grade or fifth grade. That's their first year, they have a.
Exactly, it's all the building blocks out here.
So you, you will typically see that decline happen and also new teacher. With that new curriculum, they have to learn how to get everything job on. So that they feel. If we implement the implement fidelity the first year. And we implement fidelity, you're actually investing some students when you're doing that. Because you're not differentiating enough for it, although the program says differentiates. So typically what happens is teachers will go through and follow it to a T for the first year. And then they're like, you know what, I could do it this way, you could share it this way. So then it gives them what we call integrity for teaching. So you're teaching integrity versus fidelity. And then that second year, you'll start to see a little more uptick for the teachers in their instruction. But you're also getting kids in the second. And that's where it starts to back up. So the dip is, is a, a natural.
Could be a great thing for the strategic plan, so it's a three-year strategic plan, and it will be up big for three years, I guess would be a great thing to do.
And, and that part of why I built in the intervention act, if I'm looking at the scores, I'm looking at the size of that population. It's something that's mixed, right? Where is there, and it's, and no fault of our staff, it's like what they have the resources, it's what they have for instruction. And where's the aligning for the curriculum? If everyone's kind of doing their own thing, or they had proper release, kind of, they wanted it.
Every day has.
You, you just, they adjusted, like I was saying, why I have the field built in. So if there's communication between grade levels, then it's like, no, we do need that because in our standards, it's. And I'm trying really hard to, to get them to start to work when they're doing their planning at the standards. What is it, what does that standard mean? Like in a PLC, what's it paying, what's asking to? Gets to do. What's that mean, what's it look like, does it feel like? How can students who don't speak English access it yet? Or is the special education accessible? What types of accommodations are we, class of everybody has an accent. That's, that's where, that's where you get your gaps, right? So on teaching, definitely here in the middle. Of how are you helping kids who don't have it, and how are you teaching kids who are doing it? So that first year, can't necessarily do all of those other positions because those just aren't. Which is why you have to see the gap. That's why it's a safety net of interventions, so that they are getting some of the supports. And thankfully, you have part of your true square, it's a catalyst, so that they will have something that connects right back to what they're doing in the. So it's like, so it's puzzled, because it's a state activity, they just try to support teachers to get through that first year. Then it looks to be. That's the goal.
I've thought. Created as the highest. Like if they need to focus and work a maximum, and I'm sure they are, have they had their programs evaluated, what's going on? That would have been easier to say, let's disconnect the period, and then if they change. We adopt a great cutting of successful. Name up, not to comment, but. If we'd have been okay for all this, then the approach would have been seamless, the entire grade split. That didn't happen, so that's, that's so much problem about it, because not a whole lot we can do about that. And it'll take two or three years and they'll start to see the benefit of our kids. Where we heard all you kids. Just go to the middle school approach here, but in sixth grade, we're going to help our kids. That's going to be huge, that they're already going to have two different teachers that are going between subject areas. And when they move there, it's.
I, I'm just glad that's bad, who said it had been traditional and. I I'm just glad that's bad, because they've been traditional, and um it it's so important, it gives those two teachers that connection and partnership.
Yeah, this is great.
Facilities can do that.
So um there's a lot of colors everywhere at the school, a lot of colored paper, everything's kind of organized by color. Um and this bright pink one caught my eye one day, and I was talking to Sherry, and I was like, is this for real? Or is this old, and she was like, no, this is for real, and I was like, we charge fifty dollars an hour for our facilities that are from people outside for profit organizations to use our property. And then we're only twenty dollars for the hot view, um and no charge for sitting. I get the no no charge for sitting, it's something that is right now, we do not want to charge for any day, right? Um and knowing the hot view is something that we want to promote, how for us, with being a job, and I have this discussion, but it makes no sense to put a lot of the rate, um but knowing that there are others out there that want to use our our space, and with the rise in, like the rising cost of utilities and the rising cost of so you'll be, so all that, we're looking at fifty dollars an hour, we're we're losing money.
Yeah, I thank you so much for looking at it.
I just, I pick it up and look at it, I was like, what is this? So um and then I tried to just make it a little more professional, so I didn't put any. Here, um. The only change that differs, I hope you have a chance to look at it all, but the only change, the for-profit to uh fifty to sixty-five. I mean, it's something different, I'm not that much sure, uh.
Maybe more. I I actually had a question of awarding.
Yes.
Of of the for-profit underneath yoga fitness and boot camps, it says if residency or nonprofit verification is not submitted, this way applies.
Yeah.
And so if you're a resident of the. You wouldn't.
If they're, if they're a resident, and they have a for-profit business.
Mm-hmm.
Then they would pay a for-profit because they're there, but unless you're showing that you have a residence.
Well, okay, but so if you're a resident.
And if your pay is sixty-five dollars, if you're a resident, why doesn't even, why does it matter?
I guess you could stop talking.
Yeah, I know, I was just, I was just looking at it sick, so if you're a resident, you you get that, and you, it's a business you're putting here instead of a league, you're making money.
Right.
And um and you're not a nonprofit, that I just wanted a little clarification.
Yeah, I was just saying, like, how do you, how do you handle that for residence safety, I mean, that would be something that is out, would you want it, if it was a local person to have their, would you show up and do, would you give them the best grade?
No, 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 none of it's a for-profit.
That's why I was, that's why I was questioning it.
Yeah. Let's drop that out, and I don't keep it as.
Uh because that.
I think we should, should we have to. You don't have to sign off today, I would actually like to look at these.
Yeah. I'd love to compare them to one of those.
Yeah.
So the Swansets charge a hundred percent on it.
Exactly, yeah.
Um theirs is on their website.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Just out of curiosity, how much like for-profit rentals did we have before fifty dollars an hour?
So what was happening, the Swanset price, this is just hearsay from people who. Usually, um that Swanset charges a lot more.
Mm-hmm.
So as soon as people get friends, that they can start to friend, they're coming to play in competition to get.
Yeah.
They can get it through.
Hmm, yeah, and it did cut it a lot of times with not kids for little league and soccer.
A lot.
Uh well, that in in Swanset does make a lot, so.
And and the main thing to me is like, we're not here to make a profit, but we're here to at least cut events.
Okay.
I just know it looks like three year, where it's like, uh, we could make it a thousand dollars an hour, it doesn't matter, you know, but it's work, what we can do, yeah.
I also think like, you know, the hot little league turned out of this, uh, you know, was a choose three budget, I think they had ten thousand. Versus Swanset football, which had a program here, which is a lot more money.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think not all nonprofits are creating, you know, is nonprofits set at a hundred fifty thousand dollar budget, right? It's nonprofits that have seventeen million. So I think the sliding scale, your operational budget for a nonprofit might make more sense than just a flat fee.
Did you play with it and, you know, I I just wanted to bring it.
Thank you.
No, I just thought, this is the first time I'd actually seen it beyond the pink sheets that were never.
Something like that allowed sliding scale.
Yeah.
It's your, it's your policy.
It's, it would be the Johnson School policy, using sliding scales to charge fees, and you, you can't say, oh, I decided I'm only letting you do for this amount of money, you publish it before, and everybody has to be able to save.
No, I'm just making sure that it's legal.
I've never, you know, it's for your, I mean, fine, but having done this for a school.
Yeah.
We do it, so for.
Is it an administrative nightmare?
Um not a ton, because we have a lot of Chelsea block space built, so, you know, so if one space can, like, you could pretty much pick up another space, so it's not too bad.
But I guess, I'm saying it's like verifying, like, oh, you're this big of a nonprofit, and you're this big of a nonprofit, like, it's an administrative nightmare, like, okay, what am I?
No, but you just. No, you give a party, no, you just. This could be of your audit.
So. All right.
Yeah, I don't even know. So, no people, I mean, I haven't wanted to.
You may even want to do like um identifying the age, but the law.
Yeah.
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 Again, I'm.
Right. Auditors are publicly available.
Discrimination and things like that are a real thing.
Yeah. Auditors are publicly available, it tells you if you want to. Yeah.
And you know, and also thinking um about this, is that making it more accessible for people, so baby, and it's one of his his side projects, so if he's caught up on something, I try to give him a tech person. He says, I mean, emergencies happen, urgent things happen, you take care of that, but if there's a time if you don't have something, one thing I'm asking you to create is um an electronic form for this, so that what will happen is you go on the website, click on it, and then fill it out, and then there's there's something called AutoCraft, which automatically you notify somebody else, because there's so who go to Rob, who has the damage, you, if it works, and if you just kind of go through the use, it'll be, could you drop downs of like, where is your your budget, and then it will automatically drop them all into that.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh but I, we didn't get that far. But that is something that I was thinking, like, trying to get a little bit more. To access that, or, yeah, because if if I'm gonna, maybe I want to do the birthday party here with my kids, right? And if I can just go online and I can see everything like there, I don't have to go to school, I can have a paper, I can actually live online and get.
Yeah, yeah, that's wrong.
But eventually, it's, this is supposed to be a paper forms where kids enroll in.
Oh, yeah.
The grade.
Do you know how many times I submitted this, did it exactly, I hope it's all right? In the state, that, like, I'm really doing this again, like, you don't have to work from last year, and I just seem like you last year. Uh because they weren't short either.
No.
And it's like, hey, like, my my in-laws' names and contact, it it hasn't changed, but.
That was a plus, you know. So one of the things, like, I guess it brings up too, that if we're shifting side, and I am clearly a technology oriented moving, so um I've got to be just organized as your school, it's a lot more of some, like, uh you don't have to be a parent coming out every twenty times, that it would all kind of be there's gonna be, there will, there is a strong for professional development around technology, or are you straight with systems? Fire teachers, and trying to get them to be, to be able to be successful, to be able to pull all this stuff off, and then you don't, you just don't have the technology versus the technology to really do a good job that you want to do.
I mean, in my field, they're saying, if you're not following AI, then you're gonna be left in the dust, we're still filling out your forms, like, so. Wrong, wrong gap between those two things.
And just for the record, I mean, those are the same forms I filled up for my boys, and they're in their mid-thirties now, so it kind of.
It's tiny.
We didn't have the same, that could have been ten years ago.
What if we, everyone's getting this paper packet.
Yes, it's, 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 it's this monster packet, and it's hard, that, you know, families have to do. You see, here, their child get here, and it covers absolutely every, everything.
But that's why I think you get a lot of late uh pre-K enrollments, because people are like, I don't want to fill out that packet.
Exactly.
And I'll wait until the last possible day, and then I'll fill it out, and I'll drop off two days before, and here and, okay.
I mean, it was such a tiny, like, space to write things, and I write a really small, I'm like, okay, who can do this?
I'm so, I'm slowly wrapping, like, blowing things out, like I said earlier, like, it's a project, try this, you know, and I'm trying to give people ways, and I'm like, please don't send me things in um Microsoft, because then when it goes into Google, it's, which. That's right, so I start that process, and if someone asks you for something, they're like, they just say, in the Google Drive, they're like. What's the Google Drive? Oh, no, come on in, come on in.
Actually, just part of why I was late tonight is because I thought about that this fourteen section of my springfield forever in school. They don't, the amount that don't know about technology, so maybe we should.
Yeah, we could.
Again, expense.
But I think for, you know, it's, again, no fault of.
No.
The chairs, if they.
No, if we hire them.
If you've been working in isolation for years, how do you know what you don't know, so, you know.
Totally.
There is.
And this isn't even AI.
Correct, I actually read a whole article that was in the missionaries released this morning from Dassie about AI.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, so.
Well, does this, it's been good?
I I haven't seen it.
No, I haven't seen it.
Brogan, I. I'd be forward to all of it.
Oh, that would be.
I I would actually.
It's it's good stuff.
It's really interesting, they have a committee that they put together, that's made up of different educators from across the state, um and it doesn't pro or con AI, it gives you all of the facts and how, like, what the different types are, so you can make an educated decision. Um this was a big topic for us in Melbourne last year at high school, because kids were using AI to do their work, to do their work, to keep papers. Um which.
Very obvious when they get.
Oh, yeah, so actually, one of the little tricks we used to do there is in white, we would write add like a monkey, and the kids would quickly copy paste, put it into AI, and then they copy paste their results back into a paper, but the people in the mailbox, they just, they didn't read it, because they were just. So you would get the whole article, you would know, like, instantly, like, I just saw one, you, it's like, what? You know, so uh we we had little tricks that we would use at the high school to try and literally catch the kids. Uh but that that whole article, it's like, I think it's like, I would say, it's like fifty pages, it's long, it's just some guidance, because AI, it's kind of like. Right, they have to make them out, and everyone was like, I'm never using that, I don't, I don't see the value in that, and then we learned how to do it, which is all that's the same thing that we're allowed.
I just said it to everybody.
I bet it.
So I know that I should say this to all school committee members, chart force. For those that have not taken it.
Oh, are you kidding?
I know, I'm.
And then I.
And then I, and then you could have taken it from my job, that I couldn't do.
I am telling you, I drove to Worcester, right, it's like a weekend therapy session, because it was either Worcester, it was someplace I can remember in the winter.
Swans, Swans.
It, yeah, some, it was, Worcester was the closest out of all of them, so. I got it done. If, um, for those that haven't, and I'm not calling a, please, no.
I mean, I've been here for so long, it's crazy, but the funny, I was, I'm on the governor's council to set the new RAD standards, right? I was appointed to represent the charter sector, and um so I'm sitting at my work table, it's the guy who's in charge of school committees. I forget, we're wearing something, right, so he's at my table, and he said something about charter divorce, I barely knew he was the first one meeting. And you're like, we're not, we're not, you know, in that realm, I usually flip them to the side, so, you know, and then I'm, I'm like, that's the thing I'm supposed to do, is the school committee member, and he's like, you haven't done it, and so I got myself in hot water there, so.
It's a very serious thing.
If I had nine lives, I'm on my last life, I can't believe you don't do it like that.
I would do it. The interesting thing that I found was they don't count on in Boston.
I know.
They don't.
Here. Rob, why is it they want to Boston?
That makes no sense, it means else of the.
I think he wants Boston.
Maybe he'll actually.
It it is.
Tell him one future.
Hours, it's like I have to, I didn't buy online. Because they wasn't available.
I knew their payers.
Side group.
You know, I don't want to start my.
There's no audit of it, there's no penalty that you remove from school committee, we're supposed to do it, we're supposed to tell you to do it, if you don't do it, I don't think it's.
No, I, I.
Why you don't want?
They're taking.
Like, can I do? Yeah. I just thought it was funny that they missed it there, busted my. Bugged in my family, exactly. All right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's one. All right, I, I, I know it's been all over this agenda too.
Let's shoot.
Let's do it. But I think it was covered on. So picture agenda items. Who's gonna go? Yes, we have.
Build a charter course.
So go on, everyone's fleet, charter course.
I'm not sure why I should.
By nine ten?
Yeah, I I think we need to move back to.
We're back on the every two week meeting schedule now, so.
Yeah. So our next one is September second.
Yes. No, it is first, yes.
Yeah.
All right, so could I have a motion to adjourn, unless someone has.
Motion to adjourn, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, school committee meeting at nine oh eight P M.
Second.
Thank you.